Calling to order the Monday, February 7th, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin? Councilmember Hennan?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or additions or deletions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Reverend Mandy Beal.
I invite you all to please join me in a moment of prayer and centering. Most gracious and loving God of many names and no name at all, we gather tonight to represent and to consider the cares and concerns of this community. May this meeting be guided with a sense of love, openness, honesty, and affirmation. May we who are gathered here remember and call to mind the values that we all hold dear: dignity, decency, earnestness, the sanctity of human life. There are those here tonight to be sworn in as officers of the peace. We pray for their safety in the line of duty. We pray for them hearts of service and humility as they discharge their duties. May this be so. Amen, and blessed be.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have reached the public comments section on our agenda. For our normal rules and procedures, these are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on specific agenda items while they are being considered. Remember, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign in at the clerk's table. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and again, this is for items that are not included on tonight's agenda.
Hi, I'm Rachael Pisantini. I live in Berkeley. So I'm here tonight to address and bring forth a concern. You all, who have either been elected or hired and taken oath of office, the City of Berkeley has an ethics policy that needs to be followed as well. I think you guys are all familiar with that. So why I'm here is because I have huge concern regarding a council member that continues to slander and bully people online within our community and outside of our community. And this is unacceptable, and it needs to stop. So that council member is Dennis. Whether you like me or not, it's not a concern to me. What is a concern to me is that you are respectful, just as our prayer had said, to all members of this community and those who don't live in this community who still participate in forums. Everybody welcomes what everybody has to say here if you want to provide information to the community or you want to answer questions. What is not tolerable is to slander people online. And Dennis, you are not the arbitrator of truth. You are not the arbitrator of people's opinions or people's thoughts, and that's not fair.
Rachael, can I, please, again?
No, I'm here to address a concern.
And that's okay, you can express your concern, but when it's more individual, I think there's probably a better form.
No, because everybody needs to know what's happening.
I'm not disagreeing with you there.
I've said all I need to say. My only request is that you review the oath with Dennis as well as the ethics policy. I'm going to make this a matter of record. I will hand it to you, Mr. Mayor, the clerk, and the attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Blanchard, Berkeley. I'm here to talk for this man about the...
What was that?
(laughing). Something you don't know. Honorable mayor and council. I'm here to talk about the Berkeley American Legion Family Support for the Community. Just to let you know, once again, the Berkeley Post 374 family was very active in supporting local veterans in the community at Christmas time. Through the efforts of post members and friends, the post was able to provide food baskets to 35 veterans' families. The members were asked to donate items that were necessary to provide a complete meal. From this, we packaged and delivered Christmas full meal baskets, which include the turkey, ham, fresh fruit, and a $50 mayor gift card for needy veterans' families in the Detroit area on December 22nd and 23rd. In addition, we had enough non-perishable food left over to donate seven large boxes to the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. Once again, it was a very warm and wonderful feeling to reach out and help others. We're very appreciative of our efforts. Because of the generosity of our members, friends, and a wonderful $1,000 donation from the Berkeley Area Schools PTSA and $200 from Berkeley Public Safety, we were able to donate more baskets than in years past. In addition to the food baskets, the Sons of the American Legion made these Christmas donations: $500 to Jetson Center, $500 to Michigan Veterans Foundation, $500 to National Emergency Fund, $500 to Homeless Veterans Fund, $500 to Tunnel for Towers, $500 to Grace Center for Hope, $250 Rogers Elementary Dad's Club, $250 to Fisher House of Michigan, $250 to Capes and Supplication, $250 to Leader Dogs for the Blind, $250 to the USMC College Education Fund. I wonder about that, knowing that the Marine Corps... But anyway, as I move along, and you notice I didn't invite my Marine Corps buddy with me, who usually follows... $250 to vets returning home in addition to the $250 that they give every month. The SAL with auxiliary purchased a new freezer for the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry, and we also helped out at the fundraiser for RS Strong. So, and we're currently running a 50-50 raffle to raise money for the American Legions in Kentucky that are supporting the areas down there that were damaged in the tornadoes. So this will give you a little update on what we're doing, so, thank you.
Excellent.
That's fantastic. You thank the Legion, certainly. And thank you, Councilmember Blanchard, for bringing that to our attention and making sure that everybody's aware of all the great things that are happening. Oh, and that's it, we're gonna end... Oh. Okay.
Good evening to Mayor and the honorable council and residents of the beautiful city of Berkeley. I'm Mike McGinnis, downtown Berkeley dude, or more formally Executive Director for our Downtown Development Authority. Wanted to invite the community to the Frozen February Block Party. Congrats to the city and the Parks and Recreation Department for our really successful winterfest. We want to keep the fun times rolling, even if the temperatures are still frigid, so please join us this Saturday, February 12th, between noon and 4:00 p.m. We'll be rocking Robina, so Robina and 12 Mile with a food truck, live music. We have a station driven by PNSpiration. They're the ones helping organize it, PNSpiration Berkeley, Valentine's-making stations, and those Valentines will be collected and given to senior citizens in the Berkeley area. But there's so many more activities right there, and the Berkeley High School Drama Department. Their musical for the spring is Cinderella, and so they're raising funds to support that celebrative... You know the word. Celebration of creativity. I was just trying to be too clever, trying to fit in with the very witty folks up at the dais, that they're raising money for their musical, and not only will they be doing that at the Frozen February Block Party this Saturday, February 12th, from noon to 4:00, but throughout the coming weeks. This weekend, there'll be shopping incentives at certain stores in downtown Berkeley where a portion of the proceeds will go to support B-Drama, but also they'll be raising money throughout the weeks to come, partnering with downtown Berkeley businesses, so that way downtown Berkeley is the way that you can give back, not only to our amazing local retailers, but to B-Drama as well ahead of the Cinderella musical. So that was really it. Hope everybody comes. Canines are welcome. Law enforcement is very welcome, and please join us. It's free, it's fun, and we'll have fun. I was about to make some witty thing about being warm, but I can't guarantee that. So we'll hope to see you in downtown Berkeley at Robina and 12 Mile this Saturday, February 12th. I'll stop.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments before I close this and we move on with our agenda? Seeing nobody trying to get up, okay. Now move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1371. Three, proclamation number P122. Matter of approving a proclamation declaring February 2022 as Black History Month in the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Are there any changes or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
We do have a proclamation, P0122, that I have decided that I am going to be reading this evening. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring February 2022 as Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and whereas it became a month-long celebration in 1976, the month of February was chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, and whereas during Black History Month, we commemorate Black history and its cultural contributions to American life, and is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States of America. And whereas Black History Month grants us an opportunity to recognize and honor the heroes of African-American history and celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. And whereas the City of Berkeley continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas the City of Berkeley is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout our state and nation. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims: Section 1, that February 2022 shall be recognized as Black History Month in the City of Berkeley. In Section 2, the City of Berkeley also calls upon the community to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. In Section 3, the City of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our effort to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Proclaim this 7th day of February 2022 at a regular meeting of the city council, signed by me, the mayor. Excellent. And with that, Ms. Mitchell, would we please... Or would you please read item number two?
Oaths of Office. Oaths of Office to appoint Public Safety Officers Andrew Boring, Evan Beauchamp, and Canine Bear, along with recently promoted Sergeant Steve Mueller.
All right, we will do that, and apologies to Mr. Boring Beauchamp and Sergeant Mueller. I think that somebody else is gonna try to share or steal the spotlight.
Well, we will start with the star, not that they're all stars, but with Canine Bear.
Oh, wow. How does that feel?
Hi, buddy. Can we take a photo? I'm sorry, are we allowed to take a photo?
Bear.
I don't know why, honestly, why not? Okay.
Matt and Mike are...
Bear, do you solemn... Having been duly appointed as a Public Safety Canine for the City of Berkeley, do you hereby solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Berkeley, and perform the duties to the best of your ability? We'll take that nod as a yes. Congratulations, Bear.
Good boy. Great, don't go anywhere.
Bear gets presents, Brian.
Sorry.
I gave mine ahead of time.
Poor Andrew, Evan, and Steve don't get anything, but okay. Bear, anything you would like to say? Brian, anything you want to say on Bear's behalf?
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your service, for both of you.
Yeah, so Bunting, anything you'd like to say on Bear's behalf?
Officer Boring? I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Andrew Boring.
Aye, Andrew Boring.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer for the City of Berkeley?
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer for the City of Berkeley?
Do hereby solemnly swear?
Do hereby solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley?
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that you will perform the duties of your office to the best of your ability?
And that I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Andrew, before... I know the chief will come up after, but is there anything you would like to say?
The only thing I'd like to say is thanks to my wife for always supporting me through all this stuff and dealing with me working midnights all these years and stuff like that, so, other than that, and my dad is here somewhere. Other than that, that's it. Oh, thanks, bud. That's my kid.
Welcome and thank you, Andrew. Thank you, thank you.
Officer Beauchamp? I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Evan Beauchamp?
Aye, Evan Beauchamp.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer?
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Officer?
For the City of Berkeley?
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear?
Do hereby solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley?
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And perform the duties of your office?
And perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Evan? Can you come to the microphone so everybody gets to hear you?
I just want to thank my family for supporting me, and I want to thank Sergeant Gary for teaching me how to be a cop.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Andrew, welcome.
And Sergeant Mueller? I'll have you raise your right hand. Aye, Steve Mueller?
Aye, Steve Mueller.
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Sergeant?
Having been duly appointed as Public Safety Sergeant?
For the City of Berkeley?
For the City of Berkeley.
Do hereby solemnly swear?
Do hereby solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter of the City of Berkeley?
The Charter of the City of Berkeley.
And that I will perform the duties of my office?
And I will perform the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yeah, my phone's anywhere. Yes, I'd like to thank my wife back here in the blue for all her support as well. I, too, am on midnights, and it's been a long time, and probably gonna be a long time more before I get on days. I'd like to thank all my coworkers for their support, city council for always supporting the police department, and just plan on being here for the long haul and keeping Berkeley one of the safest cities in Michigan.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you.
And then we'll go back to Mike to wrap it up.
Just real briefly, little-known fact, PSO Beauchamp and PSO Boring are both Berkeley High School graduates. Bear, as you know, the high school was named after... The mascot was named after Bear. And actually, all of them are good boys. I've learned you gotta treat them all the same. You can't be special. And I don't mean to brag, but my dog would have actually put his paw for just a second if you were holding a treat. So maybe next year, we'll work on that. I just wanted to welcome Andrew. I was joking around with the mayor. He's actually close to retirement. He's been here over a year and a half so far, and Evan just joined us, and Steve actually has been here for quite a while, got promoted coming up on almost a year now, so they're all fully entrenched. Evan came to us from another department with a lot of experiences, hit the ground running, so we're just happy to have them in our family, and we'll do everything we can to keep the city safe and do what's right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate that.
And I'd like to introduce PSO Bunting.
And just so everybody is clear, yes, we joked about Mike and Steve being in their positions already. We wanted to do it at a meeting that wasn't virtual to officially recognize and welcome all of the officers and their promotions or coming into the station, so that's why we waited. Hence the joke now makes more sense, since we've been here for a while and Steve's been promoted. With that, Mike, anything else?
I got nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Bear. Good luck. You got a lot of treats. Welcome, I know you're the superstar out here. Thank you, everybody, also, for being with us, all the folks from the department. Showing support for everybody here. We are truly a community. Thank you. We'll take a quick... We'll take a quick second for this group to move out and the next group to move in.
Shift change.
Yeah. Quick line change, and then we'll move on with our agenda.
I know, it feels more...
It went from like warming to freezing.
I was thinking I'm gonna start bringing a fan in the spring, but she brought it today.
What you need to know?
It was like blowing freezing air, and now it feels like inferno.
Thank you for taking care of it.
It's hard to choose one or the other.
Yeah, we're very extreme here.
There's no middle ground.
No. All right. Ms. Mitchell, let's try to get back on track here. Would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M2422, matter of approving a Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation event, Bacon Walk on Oxford Park, Bacon Avenue, and J.C. Park on Saturday, April 9th, 2022, from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to the event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M2422?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a... This comes... The application comes to you via the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation, which is a 501(c)(3) group dedicated to supporting parks and recreation in the City of Berkeley. The president of Berkeley Parks and Recreation Friends was not able to be here this evening, but she did send correspondence earlier in the day, and so I'd like to read some excerpts from that to give those watching at home a sense of what this event is and all the great benefits that will have. So the Bacon Walk is a fundraiser that specifically will go to J.C. Inclusive Playground, which is planned for this upcoming year. As an organization, they wanted to express their excitement about the addition of a fully-inclusive playground within the city's borders. If approved, the Bacon Walk will be held on April 9th of this year. Tickets for the event will be sold in advance, but you can buy tickets right up to the day of the event. Participants will gather at Oxford Park prior to the event. Once the event starts, they will walk north along Bacon Avenue, hence the name, all the way up to J.C. Park. Those both share Bacon Avenue as a common border between the two. They will be completely confined to the sidewalks, and so walkers will be permitted to utilize strollers and wagons, but bicycles will not be allowed for this event, and they plan to cover that during the registration process to know. For this group's concern, they'll have volunteers set up. They'll have at least two at each intersection along the walk. They'll have two on each shot of 12 Mile to ensure the participants safely cross and do not impede the flow of traffic. And they'll also have volunteers assigned to lead the walk, as well as sweepers, as they call the last in line, to make sure that no one falls behind. Participants can stay once they get to J.C. Park for as long as they want. There will be refreshments available, but they will have to arrange their own transportation back to Oxford, and this is mostly due to Corona concerns. Right now, they're in the process of acquiring their commercial liability coverage, but the application is otherwise complete, has been reviewed by all required departments, and with each recommending approval of this event.
Thank you. Questions for the city manager or on the correspondence I believe you all received earlier today? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for some of those highlights. The email that we received was very thoughtful and articulated so many fantastic points. I'm very excited about this, although not actually having bacon there, you know, I'll still probably be there.
That was a trick to get people to show up.
Yeah, I liked the...
Good marketing.
Yes, it was very effective. So speaking of marketing, in what ways will this be communicated with the residents and folks be made aware of the process and registration and those kinds of things?
Sure, I do believe the Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation will plan to get the word out via social media. We'll also be supporting them with the city's outlets as well, and I know the Berkeley Parks and Rec Department will also be aiding them in getting the word out to participants as well, so we want to make sure... This is certainly part of it, but there'll be some ongoing efforts on behalf of the city as well as the nonprofit moving forward.
Great, sounds like we've got the bases covered.
Yes.
Excellent.
Bagels and bacon will be served, according to the email.
Just saying. You gotta read till the end sometimes.
I missed that highlight. Boy, that was the best for last, too.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have just a comment, and I want to thank the Friends for bringing this event before us, and I think it's a great way to involve the community in a park that will be inclusive and fun for all, so I'm very happy to see it. I'm happy to support it, and I'll probably do the Bacon Walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? No? All right, well, I certainly agree that it is a very exciting event, and very thankful that the Friends of Parks and Recreation, I know, are continuing to find ways to be involved in our community, and this is a tremendous new event and something that I'm sure we'll all be excited for, especially now, you know, you're gonna get bacon, too, so...
Oh, and donuts, holy smokes.
Even better. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M2422?
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four?
Ordinance number O122, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to rezone properties described as 2465 and 2475 Cambridge Road lots 123 and 124, except that portion now included in Coolidge Highway of Hannan's West Royal Oak Subdivision, and 2466 and 2476 Columbia Road lots 125 and 126, except west 10.25 feet of Lot 125 and west 10.23 feet of Lot 126 of Hannan's West Royal Oak Subdivision from Coolidge District to Gateway District.
Is there a motion to approve O0122?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This comes to you via the Planning Commission. Your packet includes a very extensive outline of the actions that they took, the items that were reviewed, as well as the findings included in their recommendation from the Planning Commission. As noted in the motion itself, this is a rezoning of an application, so the property owner in this situation owns a couple of different parcels that were zoned in two different zoning districts. The request here was to unify them under the same zoning district. Your packet includes... Does note that Planning Commission followed all necessary procedures for the rezoning process, including holding a public hearing and putting a public notice in place that notice in place that notified all individuals within the required distance from these parcels. Ultimately, the recommendation of the Planning Commission on a nine to zero vote was to recommend the approval of this rezoning based on the five different criteria, which are five different findings of fact, which are also noted in your application. Your applicants themselves are here this evening if there are any questions for those gentlemen as well.
Yeah, certainly.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Wadika. My business is located in Berkeley at 2060 Coolidge Highway. We've owned these parcels for quite a while and I wanted to unify the zoning as Mayor, as City Manager Baumgarten indicated, and I'm happy to ask, answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wadika, for being with us. Any questions for Mr. Wadika? We've seen, you know, the Planning Commission's report and their recommendation, but he wanted to come and visit, so.
I'm over here.
Questions? Councilmember Henon?
I have just a couple of comments. The rezoning request itself to me is a little weird and left me scratching my head since it doesn't really get you any closer to the stated goal of multifamily units, but it does provide a single, signal of intent from you. And while it's not necessary, it's really appreciated. And then if we support this tonight, it's also a signal from the city of moving these properties towards what we've already envisioned in the master plan. So for the people at home, that doesn't mean that this is an automatic approval that multifamily, new multifamily units are going to go there. There will still be a lot of steps before that can happen, but based on just the signaling and overall, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to again clarify, as Councilmember Henon mentioned, the proposed rezoning implements the change detailed in our master plan's future land use map and the zoning plan for the Coolidge District to be located solely in the downtown future land use designation. So as was mentioned earlier, Mr. Wadika, this is bringing into what we want to see in the future and setting the groundwork for something additionally following this in the future. Mr. Wadika, anything else you'd like to?
No, thank you for your consideration.
It seems you've done a tremendous job with the information and the Planning Commission answered most of our questions. So seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O 0122?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne, for being with us this evening.
Thanks.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 2522, matter of awarding the Forestry Services Contract to Hart Urban Forest Street located in Sterling Heights, Michigan for a three-year term.
Is there a motion to approve M 2522? So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As our normal process, this is a professional service that's provided to the city and at the end of, in advance of the end of the current contract, the DPW Director, Derek Schuler, who's with us this evening, went out to bid and received bids back on the Forestry Services. Ultimately, coming back around to the recommendation included in your packet, this did go through a closed bid process through mitten, as is our normal process. So nothing new or outstanding from this from a process standpoint, other than to, as Derek will tell you, recommend someone who has given great support to the community up to this point.
Mr. Schuler, good to see you again.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Good to be back. Before you tonight is a recommendation for award for citywide forestry services. So this involves work along the city roadways for tree trimmings, evaluations, removals, those sort of things. So as Matt alluded to, our bid does expire this month. So previously, we went out to public bid and we did receive two bids for this work. And J.H. Hart, Judd Hart is with us tonight, was the lowest qualified bid of those two bids received. So we're recommending award. We've had a great relationship with Hart over the last six years. I am amazed, I've got emails that I've saved from residents who have shared their positive thoughts about the J.H. Hart's crews. I don't know if Judd knows that or not, but I've saved those. I think it's important to understand that and we are getting compliments from them on a regular basis and it's just nice to know that their crews engage positively with our residents. Sometimes those are not the most pleasant circumstances, but the staff is professional and we fully support moving forward with this award. And again, Judd Hart and, and his staff put together this bid and, and they are the lowest qualified bid for the forestry services. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, Judd's here as well if, if he wants to say a few words and yeah, that's it.
Questions for Mr. Schuler or Mr. Hart? Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I just wanted to first comment, I've been very pleased with the work from J.H. Hart. Not only were they the cheapest bid here, they were the cheapest by far. I know some in the community have had concerns that maybe trees have been removed unnecessarily and I know we've looked into this multiple times and never found a single case where a tree was improperly removed. So I, but I do want to request that we continue our process of, you know, occasionally doing an independent audit just of trees slated for removal, just to help keep that confidence with the community that we're doing the right thing.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. That is certainly an important point and hopefully continuing this relationship with Mr. Hart. He's well aware of how important our trees are in our community and taking every precaution to save ones that can be saved, if possible. Any additional questions or comments?
And if I could, Mayor, Judd has been very active with the Tree Board as well. I want to point that out. He's contributed a significant amount of his time going to a number of those meetings and doing some presentations as well. So we appreciate that as well.
And I appreciate you being here, Judd. Certainly, certainly welcome to come up and I know sometimes when a director is gonna handle a bid, sometimes the bidder doesn't always show up, but you're always here and I certainly appreciate that.
Well, we've had some controversial topics with the sidewalk program and, and tree ordinances and things like that, but six years ago, I came to this body to have you buy into a concept that we were gonna go from a demand maintenance program to be proactive and make our forest safe. And for six years, you all have continued to support Derek and I in the funding process and believing in what we were doing to make our forest safe within our right of way. And we did that in year number five. We actually made a full rotation of all of our row trees within the city. And I'm really, really thankful and proud that we've evolved our forest into a situation where we are today. And I just want to thank you all for that, that support and we really, really appreciate it. And Derek, thank you for sharing those kind words. And I hate to play favorites, but I, we manage seven other communities. And Berkeley, I'm actually part of the crew very often. I drive the crane, pick up your logs and all those different things. So I'm a very active owner, but we have had more donuts, pizza, brownies, brownies, sandwiches. The people of Berkeley are just kind and loving and that, that you have no idea what that means to us. Usually, we get yelled at.
Understand that.
And I just want you to know, though, it's, it's just, it warms my heart anytime I come into the community because nine times out of 10, with the exception of the sidewalk program, we're getting brownies and cookies. And it's, I thank the residents for their kindness and taking care of the guys and those warm cups of coffee really, really help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judd, for, for that and again, being part of our community. And that's, that's kind of how we are here in Berkeley. You've gotten to figure that out over the last six years and I'm glad that it is true. And again, thank you for being with us and answering any questions that we had. Seeing no additional, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2522?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 2622, motion to approve the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M 2622?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a couple of partial terms to fill this evening for you, but I do want to put a note in that we have a active solicitation for all of our volunteer positions. That is, the deadline for that is closing on the 18th. We're gonna try to get those in front of you as soon as possible thereafter. But these are applications that we've had for a little while and we have groups here that want to move forward on filling their ranks so that they continue to do the good work of the community. So you have two this evening before you. One is the Environmental Advisory Committee. Andrew McIndu is appointed or is seeking appointment for a partial term that would expire 1st of July in 2024. Then Historical Committee, you've got three available to you. Kyle Grimm for appointment of a partial term expiring in July 1, 2024. Don Callahan, also a partial expiring in July 1, 2024. And Shirley Hansen would be appointment to a partial term expiring July 1 in 2024. Historical Committee does not have a cap on the number of members. Mr. Callahan and Ms. Hansen are both already active volunteers with the group and would serve that, serve that body very well. Each of these have been approved by the Chair and the Council Liaison and all four of them have received a recommendation to council.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments on our wonderful folks that are volunteering to serve our community? Councilmember Vilani?
While Andrew McIndu has my full support for his position on the EAC, as he is my treasurer and my other half, I will be abstaining from this vote here.
Well.
Just for any conflict of interest, if necessary.
Council okay with that or do you feel like it's? If you want to do it, we will, I think you just really want to get out of voting on Shirley. I understand, I understand. No, but thank you, thank you. Any additional comments or questions on our volunteers? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Just briefly, I'd like to thank everyone that are already on all of our committees working so hard and, and contributing to, to our city and our community and our region. And happy and hopeful to welcome aboard these fine folks as well. I've, I've met them all and they, they do terrific things in their daily lives and we look forward to receiving additional benefits from them, you know, on these committees.
Excellent, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2622? And yes, we're gonna keep Shirley in there.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M 2722, matter of adopting the Berkeley Support Debris Management Plan.
Is there a motion to approve M 2722?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a new guy trying to prove his worth. No. Council, former council member and current emergency management coordinator, Mr. Jack Blanchard, continues to work tirelessly for the community and plan for the worst possible scenario. Not only has he done a great job of overhauling our entire emergency operations plan, he's also actively working with my office as well as our directors on training options and plans for, for staff. And he has taken this hard work now and also put it into the document you have before you. Couple of years in the making, but certainly with, with great goals and it's, it's a well-fleshed out plan and it's one that we'll hopefully never have to use, but we certainly will be ready to face the worst should that moment ever arise.
Jack?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Now that I don't have a three-minute limit, I think I'll read this plan tonight. It's only 100 pages. Now, this plan was developed over the last two years. It was reviewed by Derek Schuler and Aaron Schluto, former committee development director, and all the recommended changes have been included. The plan complies with FEMA guidance and has been requested by Oakland County. It complies with a lot of FEMA guidance because I wrote it first with FEMA guidance and then they changed the guidance and I had to write it over again. So the qualities of debris that were calculated in this plan, and that's 51,896 cubic yards of debris, were based on actual qualities of debris from the 2014 flood and the United States Army Corps of Engineers debris guidance formulas, which I used for estimating debris from tornadoes and other intense storms. The city of Berkeley recognizes that natural and human caused disasters have the potential to create debris that can disrupt the quality of life for its citizens and the complete disaster response and recovery following such disasters. The city also recognizes that planning for such disasters can lessen the impact on the community, economy and environment. Therefore, the city of Berkeley has developed this plan to facilitate a rapid response recovery from debris causing incidents. This debris management plan provides direction to facilitate, coordinate the management of debris falling in disaster in order to identify and address planning and staff training needs prior to the debris causing event, mitigate against potential threats to the lives, health, safety, welfare and economic and environment well-being of the impacted area, expedite recovery efforts in the impacted area and identify threats of significant damage to improved public or private properties. If you have any questions, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer them. This, this is something that's becoming more and more in light because of the tornado in White Lake recently, the flood when the dams broke up in Midland area created tremendous amounts of debris. And so the state is, I was at a meeting last Wednesday at the EOC in Pontiac with the Pontiac Emergency Management People and they say that probably likely chance that the state will be requiring all communities to have these plans and forward copies them to the state within the next two years. So based on that, we're way ahead of the game. So any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions for Councilmember Blanchard on something that he wrote? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I know that we have a solid emergency plan for the city of Berkeley and I know, I didn't know this till I, till I knew it, but that plan, in order for us to get any federal funding, we have to have that plan in place as a municipality. Does this plan, are any finances contingent upon having this plan?
Not, not at this time. However, if we do have a debris causing event, FEMA will come in and look to see if we are prepared.
Okay.
Under the National Incident Management System, you are required to be prepared.
Sure.
And these are the steps that they expect you to take. They don't tell you what to do. They tell you to be prepared. So this is what we're trying to do. There's a number of things. It's like coming up to, for you, in the future will be some amendments or some appendixes to the emergency operations plan, which will include other hazards that we want to include in there. And of course, each one of those appendixes will deal with an outline of how to handle that because we can never understand how it's gonna work for sure. Just like we always said in my 30 years in the Army, you know, any plan never survives first contact with the enemy. Soon as things start flying, the plan changes. But the point is, at that point, you have a plan to deviate from. You have a base to work from. So that's what we're, that's what we're attempting to do here to increase our, our planning.
So right now, this could potentially be a, a state mandated thing?
Yes.
But not at the federal level?
Not mandated per se at the federal level, but it could be by the state.
Okay. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing the appendices for the emergency plan.
There's, there's four of them coming.
I can't wait. Thank you.
One of them is animal care.
Oh, okay.
Any additional questions for Jack?
Thank you, Your Honor. More just appreciation of all the great work that you do in, in your many and varied facets of contribution. This is an incredible piece of work and I'm certainly very happy to have that and I too look forward to those appendices. And if you ever need like a graphic novel or comic book version of that, you know, because there's a lot of words and a lot of pages, I'd be happy to kind of help sketch something out for you. It might be kind of fun.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Councilmember Price?
Yes, I'd also just like to express gratitude to you and to Derek, our Director of Public Works, and to Aaron Schluto for working together on this. Yes. I'd also just like to express gratitude to you and to Derek, our Director of Public Works and to Aaron Schluto for working together on this. And this is one of the areas where I'm very proud that Berkeley is at the forefront of planning and being prepared and can set a model for our neighboring communities. So thank you so much for your work, Jack.
One of, one of the additional things that I'm doing, and I'll let you know now so you can plan your schedule, is that on March at the Capitol Conference, on March 15th, I think it is, from nine to 12, I'm teaching a class on responsibilities and training for elected officials. I complained to MML for years about not having anything for elected officials in emergency management and so they finally agreed to it. And they asked me to teach it. Never did learn to keep my mouth shut.
Being in good hands with you.
You're coming back. No, but seriously, thank you, Jack, for all of your continued service to our community and making sure that we are prepared, even ahead of time when, when required. While you're here, any communications this evening? Also, I noticed that you, you talked about, you know, things change and when things start flying around. That's why you're not sitting up here anymore?
That's right.
You were done with that shrapnel?
Because you're back here.
Probably safer tonight especially. Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2722?
Dean?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R 222, matter of approving a resolution of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, amending its rules and order of procedure.
Is there a motion to approve R 0222?
So moved.
Motion approved by Councilmember Henan?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, before you this evening, continues the conversation we've been having since initially adopting the rules and procedures for the 39th City Council of the City of Berkeley. So what we have before you is a targeted update to the section regarding filling vacancies for boards and commissions. Your packet includes a set of proposed text updates, but at your place setting and sent to you earlier this, earlier this afternoon is also a suggested recommendation worked on jointly between Councilmembers Baker and Henan. All in an effort to refine this process and make sure that we have the best volunteers possible to carry on the good work of our various boards and commissions. So council has a couple of different options this evening as far as what path to take.
All right. Questions or maybe comments first? Councilmember Valani?
So on line one, it states that city administration will publish vacancy via each of its media outlets inviting qualified people. Do we have a definition of qualified?
Our different boards and commissions will advertise areas of interest based on the, the nature of the work they do. That's, that's merely a reference to that.
Okay, because the first, the original one had reference to like attendance records and whatnot. So I didn't know if there was any, and then that was missing in the subsequent ones. So I didn't know if there was any relation there.
There, we make a reference to the attendance records for those seeking a reappointment. That was moved to a subsequent step. But are still referenced in the course of the evaluation process.
Okay.
If I could, qualified also each board, the, what enabling legislation discusses, are they residents, are they not? So that also, you know, are they registered to vote? That also goes into the qualifications.
Thank you for clarifying that. Additional comments on the item that we are discussing for our rules and procedures?
Well.
Councilmember Henan, sure.
I, just so folks are aware, the, this is mostly a codification of our existing practice and the, the newer recommendations that came to you earlier today, the main changes on them are deadlines so that there is sufficient time for everybody to review and for staff as well to prepare and get feedback back from us in preparing for meetings. So really the changes are between what was in the packet and now is the addition of deadlines.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? No? Okay. All right. Seeing no additional questions or comments. Thank you, Councilmember Baker, for bringing this to our attention and Councilmember Henan for adding your thought process to, to get us in a position where we are moving in the right direction. Maybe not the final stop, but at least moving in the right direction. So I appreciate the, the work from both of you. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 0222?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Discussion, matter of discussing a third place tie in marijuana business license score ranking.
Okay. This is a discussion. And it is a public meeting. So again, you are welcome to comment on this agenda item before council begins their deliberations. I don't think I need to turn the timer on today, but I will be watching the timer, that three minute timer, if necessary, and that's why they give me the hammer here just in case. I thought that was for me. Again, I, I want to be clear. This is not going to be a debate. We are not going to get into a back and forth and I really prefer that it does not become one better than the other because I would imagine my estimation is that everybody thinks that their proposal is worthy of moving forward and I understand that. We will keep this meeting in order and I will make sure that council can continue without interruption when they begin, when council begins its discussion. Depending on that discussion and what the majority of council talks about today, will precipitate the next steps in this process, whether that is rolling in the bingo balls and lottery option or maybe potentially having to change something that we had in place if council decides to do something else. If any of those options are the case, I want to be clear, they are not happening tonight again because they are not on the agenda. Tonight is a discussion so that council can give city administration direction on where council wants to proceed moving forward. And those would take place obviously at a subsequent meeting. It's probably all of the exposition I'm going to throw out. You, most of you were here a couple of weeks ago to hear me walk through all of that. All those same rules still apply. Before I do open it up to public, well, actually, let me ask you this, Mr. Chris. Would you like to give a, a little outline before public comment? Do we want to comment first and then you can give your outline so that council will maybe?
Your Honor, I'm certainly happy to identify what I, I believe council's consideration might include this evening. As, as Mayor you and council know, at its meeting on January 8th, it affirmed and accepted the recommendations of the hearing officer with respect to the city manager's scoring as modified and as adjusted. In, in light of that determination by council at its last meeting, it, it would seem that there's at least three general options for council to consider. It could consider awarding the, the two top applicants which are set forth in the adopted recommendation. That is certainly consistent with the framework of the ordinance. There is not a requirement that all three license be issued as council directed to the applicants. Certainly, they could, and as my understanding, may have started the process of submitting their site plan for consideration. Those three that were in the three way tie for third, my understanding is they were advised that any type of application for site plan approval would be at their own risk. And so that's the first option. The second option is set forth in the, in the ordinance and, and would involve a lottery, which would have to be determined to identify and break the tie. And that would be something that council could decide to, to proceed on. And then the third option would be to direct staff to consider the development of a proposed ordinance amendment, which would modify the number of licenses allowed for under the City of Berkeley's code of ordinances. Currently, as you all know, everybody knows, the limit set forth in Section 30 dash 807 three, 807A limits the licenses to three. So those are the three general options that I think would be are up for discussion by council this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chris. At this time, I will open it up for public comments again on this agenda item. If you would like to come with a microphone, please state your name and city of residence. I will be the arbiter of the three minute clock. There is no horn today. I mean, there could be, but I'm choosing to not go that route at this point.
Yes, I'll start. My name is Scott Roberts. I'm an attorney, Royal Oak resident. I'm here on behalf of Seven Point Dispensary of Michigan. I'm here effectively to advocate for the third option, which is to increase the number of licenses from three to five. I think there's three very good reasons why the city should consider that. The first reason is, you know, quite frankly, money. You know, I did some back of the envelope calculations earlier today. Last year, 2021, State of Michigan distributed $19.7 million to municipalities. That was, that was distributed based off the number of dispensaries and micro businesses. There's a little over 700 dispensaries and a handful of micros. Based off my back of the envelope calculations, that means the city would get approximately $27,000 per each location. So if you were to increase the cap from three to five, that would be another $54,000 per year in money that goes straight to the city's coffers. You know, I, I know this has been debated, but you know, numerous studies have also shown that the presence of dispensaries does increase property values, not just for the dispensary property, but for surrounding commercial and residential areas. As I'm sure you guys know, increasing property values increases the SEV, which in turns increases the property tax rolls. Another reason why I think we should increase the cap is jobs. You know, quite frankly, five dispensaries are going to employ more people than three dispensaries and those jobs would go to, say, my city, Royal Oak, or Ferndale, or Hazel Park, or a number of other neighboring cities. Finally, you know, I, obviously, we think we're the best. But you know, I, I think there are actually five really good applications here. And the way I see it is you have the potential to have five really good community partners instead of just three community partners. I can't speak for what the other companies are doing. I'm sure Kevin will or someone else. But I can speak for what we're doing. And I have heard, you know, that a lot of these other companies are doing very spectacular things as well. You know, specifically what I can tell you is, you know, Seven Point is going to be donating 2% of the net profits from operations to various local charities and entities. That includes 1% of net profits to the Tri-County Coalition to combat substance abuse in youth under the age of 21. 0.25% of net profits to veterans organizations and they're also, will be hiring a community outreach director and two delivery drivers who are veterans. 0.25% to the Berkeley Tree Planning Program, as well as 0.25% net profits to the City of Berkeley for Public Safety Initiatives or Community Policing. In addition to these donations, they also undergoing several efforts to physically improve the location and surrounding properties. That includes planting trees, public art installations, adding green space, adding green infrastructure on Woodward and storm water management.
We are at three minutes.
All right. Well, one more point, if you don't mind. I will just say that, you know, there are other communities in this area, Hazel Park, Ferndale, similar size, similar in population geographic scope. They have six. So I do not think adding, going up to five would be a stretch. Thank you.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. My name is Kevin Blair, attorney at Represent Loom. And just want to echo my colleagues' comments of that, you know, I, I think you did have a number of great applicants. And I would also advocate for the third option of, of considering expanding the number of licenses. The, the number of, the five applicants' interests are aligned in the sense of, of trying to advocate for the, the five license solution. If you don't mind, can I take this off just while I'm talking? So our interests align in that respect. If we get to a point where there are five fighting over three licenses, you know, I'm going to have to advocate for my client and, and, you know, make a different presentation. But for tonight, I think, I can honestly say that I do think that it is in your best interest to go with the five license solution. Because I think if you, if you award less than five, if you award two, for example, the first option, you're going to have three folks that are unhappy. If, if you award, if you use a lottery ball that's been challenged elsewhere, and I don't think that that is a tenable solution either. A variant of the option two would be to award it based on merit. But again, you'd have two unsatisfied people. And, and the ordinance, or the statute is very clear that it's got to be the best suited. So if you, if you pick five, I think there's a clear delineation between the, the top five and everybody else. And frankly, this has already been tied up in litigation for over a year. And so you've missed out on one years of excise taxes. You've had a community that voted for this and wanted this and they've been waiting for these stores to open up. So going to five, you will make up some of the lost excise tax that was as a result of litigation, not anything the city did wrong, but just the unsuccessful people that, that sued in the first place. So I think you've got great candidates. You have great candidates that really want to be here. And anything short of the five license solution, there's, there's inevitably going to be infighting. And I think even the top two are going to get sucked into that and there's going to be more delays. So honestly, you know, as much as any of the five would rather be in a town with three versus five in terms of just pure competition, at this point, it makes more sense for all five of us to, to coexist. And, and these companies have coexisted elsewhere and I have no doubt that they can do so here and all add value to this community. Thank you.
Councilman? Your Honor, Tony Moreno. I am a resident and 1957 Harvard. Been born and raised here. I lived here most of my life. Just by listening to these gentlemen, it only makes sense to go with five licenses. You have five candidates that are well qualified as from the merit point system that we, that you guys received. They all have resources to, to succeed, I guess you could say. One, they're all going to contribute to community benefit. That can be from storm water management. That could also be from partnering up with nonprofit organizations and also police, community policing. I think it's really a no brainer to have five licenses. Five is always better than three, I think, as far as, you know, like they said, is increasing the sales tax revenue and then also property revenue as well. Also too, with all these buildings that are vacant, they're now going to be occupied. And these lights, these applicants are going to be spending a ton of money improving these properties and making our city look better. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name's David King. I'm just a resident. I'm not trying to open up a dispensary or anything. But I am a proponent of option three. Most of my points have already been made. I'd really rather just like to see some revenue coming in the city and kind of sick of looking at old buildings that are doing nothing. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
My name is, my name is Josh Rubin. My address is 1975 Bacon. I am in full support of the City of Berkeley issuing a total of five licenses. I think that plan of five stores will get them all quickly open versus any other plan, which will cause zero stores to open in Berkeley for two years or more due to litigation risks. And I think that two additional newly developed buildings will be more attractive to area residents than shuttered buildings that have been vacant for years. Thank you for your time.
Jack Blanchard, City of Berkeley. As you know, I sat up there when we discussed this and I was proponent of three. But I will tell you now that I have no objection to five because I look at the geographic dispersal of the properties and I think that it, it would not be a hardship on the city because they're not clustered in any way. So I would not be against the five option.
Thank you, Jack. I assume you don't have a vested interest. Any additional comments before council? Any additional comments before council? Also not, is there something wrong with that side of the room?
Right.
There you go, Mike. There, there you go. I was, uh, Mr. Blair, I was not intending any personal offense to that. I promise. Um, okay, so council will now, um, discuss this, and, and it's, it's actually going to be probably a relatively simple discussion. We have three options that Mr. Christ, our attorney, has outlined. Um, and we are going to, again, not take a vote on a motion, but we are going to do a straw poll to figure out, uh, what, uh, which of the options council members, a majority of council members prefer. When we reach one of those, we will direct city administration, uh, on the next steps. If that does not happen this evening, we will have to figure out, um, a way to, to break that. So if there is a tie, but what I would like all council members to do, to know is, there's probably a, I like this option better, and then this option I could live with, this option I'm not really crazy about at all. What I'd like to do as we first, uh, go through here is just focus on your preferred option, right? Because if there is a tie or something, doesn't get enough votes, and we end up with two of the options outside of three, then we will go to just two and, and the same procedures as we've done in the past with other options. Is everybody clear on that? So we're going to start with, what is the preferred option that you would most like to see based on, uh, the options that Mr. Christ has outlined? Are there any questions from council members on the process? No, clear? Good. Yes, nods, and, oh, I can't see your faces, but I assume, uh, nod in some capacity. Okay, and as I mentioned, um, the time for discussion, or public comment, I should say, is, is over. So as we're going through, I, if you don't like something, I apologize, uh, but it is now, I, actually, I don't really apologize. I'm not trying to be mean, but it's kind of what we have to do here, and so we're going to do it. Um, so please do not jump up to the microphone and yell and scream, or swear, or shrapnel, or any of the above, uh, to allow us to have this conversation, because like all of you, this has been a very lengthy process, and many of us up here, uh, and sitting down there have been, uh, part of this process for a very long time. And it is not that we don't want to see anything move forward. Actually, it's quite the opposite. And to be perfectly honest, if it wasn't for all the litigation before, this would have already happened. But we understand that. With litigation, uh, there, with this particular issue, there is always the threat of additional litigation, has already been alluded to a couple of times. We are aware of that. Um, and we know that we are going to have to make a decision, uh, at least find a majority of council so that we can move forward. And with that, I will, uh, begin, uh, just kind of going through the straw poll here. We're going to start with the recommendation that is in the ordinance currently, three licenses, using a lottery to break the tie. If this is your preferred option, uh, I guess you can raise your hand, otherwise that way I don't have to go through and have people say yes or no to something, um, unless you'd rather do it a different way. Okay? Is this a question, or is this a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. We have, okay, two, thank you. All right. The second thing we will move to, uh, is, in the same order that Mr. Christ alluded to, uh, only recommending the top two scoring applicants right now, and instead of, you know, because instead of doing any bigger number, uh, it will just be two in our community. If you prefer two, uh, only, please raise your hand. Uh, it appears, um, that there is not as much support for the second option. Uh, council member Gavin is not, uh, with us, obviously, this evening because he is ill. Uh, he did, uh, call me earlier and reference the fact that that is his preferred option. He is not here, so we are not counting that, but I did want to make sure that people were aware of, of how he felt, uh, on this option before moving forward. I'm not really doing anything there. Okay. Uh, the third option, if we recommend that all of the top scoring applications, so again, we have a, currently, we have a top three, we just have a tie in third place. Uh, if the recommendation is to move all of them forward, meaning a total of five , uh, applications moving forward, who prefers that option? One, two, three, and four. Any additional discussion from council members? Okay, so we did have an option, uh, that received a majority vote of council. So Mr. Baumgarten, Mr. Attorney, um, council is, uh, instructing you to proceed with what needs to happen to amend the ordinance to allow for five applications as opposed to no more than three, which is what it currently says.
Will do.
Clear?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Christ?
Yes, Your Honor.
Everything done, uh, in accordance with your legal purview?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, I think the direction of council is clear.
Any additional questions for us, or anything else we should be aware of?
I, not, not at this time.
Okay, so that is, uh, that will be the next step. Presumably, at our March meeting, we will have to have an ordinance, uh, an amendment to the existing ordinance that would change the number of potential licenses in the City of Berkeley. It would need a second reading as well, as per all of our ordinances do. Um, and we'll move forward in that manner. Okay, we now move on to the next item on our agenda in the sweltering heat, which is communications. Ms. Mitchell? Who was up first?
Um, Councilmember Hunan.
Councilmember Hunan.
All right, um, the zoning board of appeals will meet, uh, in one week on Monday, February fourteenth. Uh, they're going to be looking at a dimensional variance for a home on Gardner, and they're going to continue their consideration of a request for a zoning interpretation concerning a home-based business. Uh, I have been reviewing our home-based business ordinance, and it, it needs cleaned up and modernization, so that is a, uh, direction I'm going to start, uh, looking at and perhaps bring some proposals forward. Um, the tree board, they'll next meet on Monday, February twenty-eighth. Uh, and then, uh, as it seems to be the state's habit of getting the vaccine data just hours before our meeting, um, the data on the latest booster data arrived, um, concerning Berkeley. Um, as of January twenty-eighth, eighty-five percent of our adults have at least one shot, but only forty-five percent have received a booster. Uh, then for children aged five to seventeen, sixty-eight percent have received a shot, but only eleven percent have received a booster. So this is me urging people, please get out there, get your booster. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Terbrek. Um, this February, I am very proud to live in a city that cares. During that snowstorm last week, I witnessed many residents pitching in to clear the sidewalks and driveways of their neighbors. I also jogged past a vehicle that a small crowd of passersby worked to free from a snowbank, and I saw volunteers from the Berkeley Cares food pantry putting food and other essential items into the hands of our neighbors in need. I'm also proud to live in a community that recognizes the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. During Black History Month and Always, Berkeley recognizes the historic and systemic racism in our community, and we actively strive to be more welcoming and inclusive to all. And finally, I'd like to thank Berkeley Parks and Recreation for hosting a phenomenal Winterfest event on Saturday. My kids and I, and, uh, hundreds of community members that we saw there had a wonderful time, and we look forward to returning to the outdoor ice rink all winter long. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Councilmember Baker?
Oh, that's me. Thank you. Uh, greetings and happy almost Valentine's Day to everybody out there. Isn't that awesome? Yeah, don't forget. Important date for some folks, yes. Uh, historical committee was scheduled to meet tomorrow, but they will, they've canceled that meeting, and so they'll meet again in subsequent months. Uh, one of the things they are working on is refining their mission and purpose statement, uh, to bring it up to date and to help ensure that, uh, we can, uh, readily communicate, um, the value that they bring and, and their services that they provide to our great community. Visitors are always welcome to our museum. It, the museum is open Wednesdays from ten to one, and Sundays from two to four, and you can go online at Berkeleyhistory.com to learn more about that. From the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, the Board of Directors will meet in two days' time, Wednesday, February ninth. And as so eloquently expressed, uh, earlier, um, the, the Frozen February Block Party is happening this Saturday, February twelfth, from twelve o'clock until four in the afternoon, uh, at Robina North of Twelve Mile. And, um, two, um, two very positive, uh, items of note with progress in our downtown. The first, and again, thanks to this body and to the board and to, uh, and to so many others for participating in this process. Uh, our downtown Berkeley has successfully received our national accreditation for another year from Main Street America. More formal announcements will be, be received in the coming weeks, uh, which we can leverage to continue to promote and, uh, and celebrate, uh, the fantastic work that we've done on our downtown and the great things yet to come. So congratulations, uh, Mr. Executive Director. And the second thing I would like to mention is also to our, um, fantastic executive director, Mr. Mike McGinnis. He was accepted into the Michigan Downtown Association Professional Development Certificate Program, uh, and he was one of only five downtown professionals in across the entire state, uh, that have been selected to participate in this program. So congratulations again for your service thus far and for the, the things that you'll be learning to bring even more great things, uh, to Berkeley and to share with, with others around us. And, uh, if you'd like to learn more about those or, um, see what's going on, visit, uh, downtownberkeley.com. And finally, it was Robert Louis Stevenson who said, "Don't judge each day by the harvest you reap, but by the seeds that you plant." And, uh, boys, listening to this conversation here and seeing our public safety officers and...
There are going plants. Oh.
Yeah, do you like that? That was pretty cool, huh? Um, uh, we've, we have planted a lot of terrific seeds. Uh, we're now in the early stages of our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, uh, fiscal budget year, and, uh, now is the time to plant those seeds that we want to, uh, harvest in the upcoming years. So this is when all of our departments are working hard. I believe their budget drafts are due next Friday, so, uh, you know, that process is moving forward, uh, on time and, uh, with a terrific, uh, consideration. Uh, and we'd love to hear, right, this is our document, right? Our budget reflects our community's values and our priorities, because if you, if you really value something, you'll find a way to fund it and make sure that it, it can happen. Uh, so please reach out to us, uh, contact us directly at, at council@berkleymish.net, or go through the city manager's office if there are things that, that you find to be of value, that you'd like to ensure, uh, have a home, uh, within our, our budget cycle. And, uh, please stay safe, everybody. Uh, and even if it wasn't Valentine's Day coming up, I would say please hug somebody you love, and, uh, take care, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker, um, for everything that you mentioned, and congratulations again to our executive director, who has still not learned to stop raising the bar, because if you continue doing that with the expectations, you're going to have to continue to exceed them. So I look forward to that, but congratulations and thank you, Councilmember Baker. Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nice job, Mike. Um, I just have a few Parks and Recreation updates. There are still some senior tax appointments available. Seniors may call the Parks and Recreation office at two-four-eight-six-five-eight-three-four-seven-zero to make your appointment for AARP to help you with your taxes. Senior Fitness is at the Community Center. Two days a week, on Tuesdays from ten to eleven, and on Fridays from nine-thirty to ten-thirty, there's a drop-in fee for the class. It's two dollars. There are more classes happening, as always, at the Community Center, and you can check out recreation.berkleymish.org for a complete list. And finally, I want to thank Director McCarlton and her staff for all of the hard work and planning that went into another successful and incredible Winterfest this past Saturday. I believe the attendance was right around eight hundred. So, um, I want to thank everyone who came out and enjoyed all the Winterfest, Winterfest activities. Um, it's always a, a great, uh, afternoon here in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
Uh, first, I'd like to offer my congrats to Officers Boring, uh, Beauchamp, and Sergeant Mueller, and of course, K-9 Bear, on their, uh, oath of office today. It is a privilege to live in a city like Berkeley, where we have such a top-notch public safety department, so thank you for all that you do for us. Uh, from the Berkeley Area Chamber, a couple of announcements. Friday, February eighteenth, there's going to be a chamber chat at Penspiration from eight-thirty to nine-thirty in the morning. All who work in the Berkeley area are welcome to attend. The next chamber meeting is Tuesday, the fifteenth of February. Coming up in March, on the eighteenth, the Berkeley University Series is back. The first topic is how to avoid ID theft and bank fraud. That will be held at the Public Library, uh, starts at eight AM for networking, and that program will begin at eight-thirty. Uh, to register, go to the berkeleychamber.com. Uh, this Thursday evening is the Second Annual Galentine's Suire at Some Girls Artsy Umbrella and Nada &amp; Company at Twelve and Robina. There will be charcuterie, sips, sweets, sales, bouquets, and psychic readings from five to eight PM. See what your future holds for you there. And lastly, some updates from the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. Uh, it's located in the basement of the Berkeley First Methodist Church at Twelve and Kipling. They are now accepting food donations on the first and third Fridays of each month from six to seven PM. Donations can also be dropped off during pantry hours on Saturdays from ten AM to twelve PM. Please use the door on Kipling. Monetary donations are always welcome via PayPal, and you can search for Berkeley Cares Food Pantry at gmail.com. You can also find them on Facebook, or check out their website, Berkeleycaresfoodpantry.com for more information.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple items. Uh, we are putting the infrastructure, uh, village into good use yet again this year. We're starting a rather large project at, uh, Kenmore and Cornwall, uh, just north of Twelve Mile. We're going to be another sidewalk-to-sidewalk replacement, uh, so it's going to be a very big project for us. The outreach for those, uh, included in that project, who kind of live in that footprint, uh, uh, has already started, but, uh, will kick off in earnest, uh, on the ninth at six-thirty with a virtual town hall. Uh, so look forward to talking with the residents along that effective area, on what to expect, uh, some of the lessons that we learned when we did a similar project along Harvard, and, uh, tips and trades on how to live with construction. Uh, it's, it's not easy, but the outcome is certainly worth it. Uh, just a reminder as well, that February twenty-first, uh, the city offices will be closed in observance of President's Day. Uh, so we won't have, we'll have, uh, all of our public works and, uh, public safety will stand ready to serve, uh, but all other offices will be closed that time. Um, next item, uh, lead lines. For though anybody interested and have questions about potential of lead lines in their household or across the city, uh, know that we've launched a new section of the city's website, uh, for those interested. Uh, it's been shared a couple of times on social media, and thank you for the council members that have done that, uh, as well as on the city's out, outlets. Uh, but if you're watching this evening and have your computer handy, uh, simply go to the Public Works page and select Lead Service Line Repacement Program. It'll be along your left-side navigation there. Uh, there you'll find helpful information on new state rules, identifying pipe materials inside your home, and how to initiate getting a lead service line replaced through our city's program. So, uh, this program has been going on for a couple of months now, has been very successful so far, and we've gotten some very positive reviews on the, uh, the third-party that we've been utilizing to replace the lead service lines that go all the way from the city's water main up through the, the meter inside the home. So, uh, great information there, and, uh, certainly more to come and more to report on as, as this program really takes off. Um, last but not least, uh, personal indulgence, if you will. Uh, both my wife and my sons have a birthday, uh, at the end of this week, so I want to wish them a happy birthday.
And so does he, so does he.
The whole family's at the same time? This is me calling my wife out, not, not the other way around. Uh, but yes, I hope it's a wonderful day for all. The twelfth and thirteenth should be a fun couple of days in our household. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, and happy birthday to you and the family.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. See, continuing to provide value, I appreciate that. Mr. Attorney?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
All right. Um, I want to, to spend just a minute talking about gratitude. Um, it's something that's come up in my office a lot and, and some of the things that we are, uh, looking at to improve the way that we coach and support folks in our office, and one of the things about gratitude, even when you are frustrated, or in despair, or anxious, thinking about something that brings gratitude, um, will actually psychologically and biologically change your mood, okay? And it is actually sort of helpful in diffusing some situations, which we find ourselves in, not us, I mean, yes, here, but I'm sure we all do, uh, on a probably more frequent basis than we would like to. And in particular, I want... And in particular, I want to gratitude and and thanks for the Parks and Rec Department, as we heard, for putting on just an outstanding Winterfest, the first one we've had in a couple of years, incredibly, incredibly well attended, and doing so completely outdoors and safely, and still having a ton of things for the kids and maybe older kids and adults to also do. And it was it was tremendous. So I want to thank Teresa certainly, and her staff, and all the sponsors and the friends that made that Winterfest happen. I want to give gratitude for our DPW and public safety, who during the last week of storms, Wednesday and Thursday in particular, were continuing to work to make sure that folks that traversed our community were able to do so as safely as possible, continuing to battle the snow. We might not have gotten the 12 to 18 inches or whatever they said, but it still was enough, obviously, to cancel school for two days and to make commutes anywhere extremely potentially dangerous. So I thank them for doing all that they could to ensure the safety of folks who traversed our community. Also, I want to give gratitude for the officers that we saw today. We were able to to swear in some new officers in our community, including Bear. And that in itself is is important and great, but the fact that all of the other officers that were here is even more special because that shows the type of bond that they have, but also shows what type of community we are. And we see that every time. Now, we haven't seen one of those in a couple of years because of the virtual meetings. So being able to see that in person and see the support from folks that are not working currently, as you saw, including Mike Bunting, who was not wearing any sort of uniform, and the fact that PSO Mike Bunting may get more than his fair share of ribbing for various things from the department and apparently me as well. Again, it shows what kind of of culture that that we have over at our department and the support that they show for each other. So I certainly want to give a lot of thanks and gratitude for that and and hope that all of our public safety officers, their continued safety. And apparently, there's birthdays, so my, I have a, I have a birthday to my daughter, not me. February 12, I believe. Happy birthday, Olive. She will be two years old already. And unfortunately, Mr. McGinnis, based on our party plans, I am not entirely sure how long I will be able to visit on Saturday, but I will do everything in my power to be able to support you, the DDA, and all the tremendous things that we continue to do in our great community. And again, as was mentioned, please continue to be safe. Yes, things may be slowing down slightly, at least as far as hospital hospital numbers and infections, but there are still a number of folks who are not doing well, vaccinated and boosted. It really doesn't care who you are, that can certainly help. But let's make sure that we're being as safe as possible, not only for ourselves, but for everybody else that we encounter, especially as more people are returning to work in some sort of capacity. Please wear your mask and be as safe as possible. I believe there are all the things that I am grateful for this evening. So thank you. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem and support from Councilmember Valani and Baker. We'll just put in a little tag team.
I'm grateful for your second.
End of the official notes that's in there. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. The February 7, 2022 meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.